We're on?
Yes.
Okay, alright, so I would like to open this Orange Township Commission meeting on Tuesday, June seventeenth, uh, to discuss the zoning code amendment. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. McNulty.
Here.
Ms. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Bellis.
Here.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Avada Nola.
Here.
Alright, like I said, we're here to review the zoning code amendment, um, and I know you've prepared, uh, Robin's staff report, so if you wanna follow us through the process, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Uh, I'll start with two things, uh, before we dive into the details in the staff report. First of all, as a thank you, uh, again, as I said in my email, uh, I think this is meeting number eight that we've had on this zoning code, uh, over the past eight months, I think, uh, so thank you all for consistent attendance, consistent feedback, thorough feedback, uh, your time and energy are very much appreciated. Uh, so we have here kind of a, uh, final, final draft, but a, a next iteration, uh, I'd like to review those changes with you and, uh, we'll see where we go later in the meeting. Uh, one thing I do wanna mention, uh, and this is a slight snafu that I discovered earlier today, that, um, I sent you two versions of the zoning code. One was a red line and one was the, the clean draft. When I was comparing those two versions earlier today, not all of the changes from the red line version saved into the clean draft. Um, so if you do have, and most of them did, most of it is okay, uh, but there were some things that, uh, and the printed version that you have was the clean draft. And so, uh, as we go through and you have comments, I, I may just preemptively say I already addressed that because I, I promise I did, uh, but for some reason it didn't save. Uh, so my apologies for that.
But you have not lost your red ver- red line version that we can use?
No, no, we still have all the changes, it's just, um, the, the, the clean version that you got had a few things that were missing from it, um, but everything in the staff report is accurate, everything in the red line version is accurate, so that's the version that we're gonna work off of in the screen today, uh, and it sort of just may not totally line up with what you have on the printed pages in front of you. So again, my apologies, but we'll try to work through that as best we can. Okay, so I'm, I'm just gonna start off and kind of go through the changes, um, article by article, and if you all want to kind of have additional comments or pull an item that I mentioned for discussion, then feel free to, uh, stop me or jump in at any time. Alright, so we'll start, uh, just with the cover, uh, which is pretty self-explanatory, uh, proposed date, uh, rather than the effective date, was updated to reflect today's date, uh, we've removed the fax number from the Orange Township, uh, listings to bring us into the 21st century, uh, and then we updated the list of zoning commission and BZA members to reflect, uh, 2025 appointments. Uh, Article one was not touched, uh, Article two, uh, we did have some changes, uh, so 2.01c, uh, there was some language in there, uh, that talked about, um, discrepancies between different, um, different provisions in the zoning code, uh, in my discussion with legal, they kind of felt that was confusing and, and didn't really need to be there, so we removed that. Uh, added language to 2.01d regarding the previously active planned districts, so again, all those planned districts that we have in place, uh, currently that exist, added some language to clarify that, uh, people still have the right to amend those planned districts, uh, if they so choose, uh, just so that was explicit. Uh, we had some, uh, paragraphs that generated a fair amount of discussion, uh, just in the, the district lines from 2.03c and 2.03f, um, ended up just removing both of those paragraphs. I believe 2.03c was one of the ones that actually remained in your printed version, um, that, but that was omitted from the red line version, um, but it just seemed confusing, legal had no problem with just getting rid of it, um, and cleaning that up. Uh, 2.05c, uh, added some language to clarify that setbacks are both from rights of way and from alleys, uh, based on our discussion, uh, just to clarify the alley issues, since we do have some of those here, um, cleaned up some language about setbacks being from the street, because there were some, uh, there was some terminology, conflicting terminology about front yard setbacks, and just clarified that they're always from the street, um, and then clarified the language regarding corner lots, uh, as well, to clarify that, uh, both of those setbacks are, uh, from the street.
And thank you for having graphics.
Yes. I cannot take credit for those, but we are glad that they are in there.
I think sometimes it's just...
Yeah.
Good visual.
Uh, removed some language regarding, uh, Florida area ratio, uh, that was a calculation that was only in our Route 23 corridor overlay district, since that district is going away, we just removed it from the zoning code entirely, we don't use that calculation anywhere else, um, so better just simplify and get rid of it. Uh, we removed some language regarding, uh, the rounding of numbers from 2.06d, uh, which basically said, you know, if, if, if you have a, a number that's a fraction or a decimal, then you can round it to the nearest, uh, whole number, didn't feel that, uh, again, in my discussion with legal, didn't feel that was quite appropriate. You could make the argument that, to somebody, "Well, I'm less than a mile into the setback, so I can, I can build my project." Um, so it, it, we got rid of that. And then 2.07a, we did add, uh, the rules for calculating density, uh, which we landed on, uh, keeping as gross density as it is in our current code. Anything, any questions on those? I know that was, I, I'm just speeding through them, but anything you wanna discuss about those changes or anything else in Article two?
Can I, can I just add something? So, because this is a lot of information, um, so myself and a couple other team members, uh, re-listened to the meetings, we took down all your comments, we put a master list together, we gave it to Robin, he then addressed as much as we believed he could, um, so if there is something that, you know, you may have forgotten or whatever, you know, hopefully that has all been captured, whether that's here today or internally by staff, so just to...
Are there still some things, though, that are outstanding, though?
Uh, the, the goal is no.
Yeah.
Not, you know, we're hoping to make a recommendation today, uh, you know, as, after Robin's done, you know, we have a recommendation with any modifications, there is a handful of things. Well, there's two things that we thought that we didn't fully address just yet, um, but, you know, I mean, again, if something comes up, but I just wanted to let you know, it's, 'cause it is a lot of information, that we did hear your comments, we took those all into consideration and applied it to the new version, so.
Now, Robin, back to your red line, if it's something that we come to, you'll alert us, this was redlined out or something?
I don't have that full list in front of me.
Okay.
But, uh, everything in the staff report was what was changed, so...
Right, okay, right. Thank you.
Um, and one thing, too, I, I think there's only, there's one or two items that we're still waiting for legal to give some more clarification on, I did try to flag those in the staff report as well, but in general, this is a, a pretty tied up, uh, list of changes. Uh, you do have the option, if you make a recommendation tonight, you can always add more conditions on at the end, if we do want to change things in addition to what I'm presenting now.
So I see that one of the modifications has to do with data centers. Are they considered, um, industrial use? Is it light industrial?
Uh, so, uh, we don't necessarily classify commercial versus industrial necessarily, but they are permitted in the flex employment zone, which is the industrial zone.
Okay.
On the definition for data center, I would say not just, and is focused on mass storage or processing of data.
Yeah.
I'd say processing of data is, can be different from storage.
Yeah.
So, just add the processing also, because...
So, yeah, and thank you for that.
AI data.
Is that one of the, that might be one of the red line things.
Yes, uh, and so...
Cryptocurrency and data mining.
Yeah, and so, that was actually, it was one thing that, um, didn't make it through the red line changes, but I also had, uh, forgotten to add the, uh, we had talked about, uh, data mining and crypto mining, um, and so that is one of the conditions on the resolution in front of you to amend that definition based on our previous discussion. So that was an oversight on my part.
Isn't that one of those things that somebody can make, can come in and tell you they're doing one thing, and then the whole thing changes to crypto or something else, and nobody's gonna check?
Yeah, nobody knows.
It, it's like a home business, well, we, we've limited to this, and then you've changed it to this, and no one's locking at your door to, to, to look for any of that stuff.
They will know if all of a sudden your power usage or you have to build a substation.
Well, but, but is, but is, is crypto mining, uh, more power?
It's less than power, it is more about how you have to, uh, register, re-register at the state level. Uh, Secretary of State website, you cannot register a data center and run a crypto mine. You have to register them. It's a different business.
And somebody's actually checking.
So when they do that, they have to complete, they do have to come and say, "This is a different business."
Well, so you registered, I, I think the point is, if you register, I start out as X, I modify internally as Y, does the state come out annually and verify?
The state will know, because if you are a crypto mine, you have regulated, regulated completely differently.
Well, I understand you're, I understand you're regulated differently, the question is, will the state know, or does the state come out and do validation that, "Yeah, you're still operating, that's what you originally registered"?
Because their IAS filing will be completely changed. They will know, because you're now producing, uh, uh, a coin that has financial value versus a service for a data center. Is the service where your revenue is, you're taking revenue for something.
I think, for our sake, the data's, and to your point, yeah.
It doesn't matter. At the end of the day, it really doesn't matter, because, because all you can deal with is whoever's in front of you and what they've told you.
Yeah, for our point, I think we wanted to add, because of, Karthik, what you've mentioned in previous commissions, uh, meetings about the cryptocurrency and the data mining, we wanted to add that to elaborate more on the definition, but at the same time, any type of data center is gonna be in the same permitted use district, so for us, you know, yeah.
For whatever reason, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would, I would, I would, from here, not knowing that much about it, technically, that storage and processing is, I'd say those things probably go together anyway.
Yeah. And at the end of the day, I mean, ultimately, it's an enforcement issue on our end, if they are different, and we have that, you know, with other, all kinds of businesses and all kinds of commercial spaces where, you know, a, a business starts as one thing and then they change to another, and sometimes we don't find out for a long time, and some people find out years later, we go in and we do what enforcement...
And at the end of the day, why would we care unless there's some real negative to it for the community? If there's no real negative to it, then truth is, why, why do we care?
Yeah, unless you tell me there's some environmental waste that's going on.
Or something else negative to the community that's going on, I don't really care.
Yeah, I agree.
It will not impact the zoning.
You came in, you registered as a data center, knock yourself out, have fun.
Right, well...
Educate me on how to set my home computer up to chip off a piece.
So, so I guess my point is, uh, some of these details, if they don't have negative effects, they don't really matter. And, and if, you know, if, 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 if there's nobody there to check, then it also doesn't matter, you know?
Yeah. Well, it could still be helpful to have those rules on the books, even if, you know...
I think so. I think so.
Yeah.
And I don't wanna say it doesn't matter, I just wanna say it doesn't apply to, like, how we're structuring the zoning code. I don't wanna, like, dismiss...
Come in and tell us your story that you wanna data center, you go, you deal with the rest of the people, whoever, yeah, I agree, okay.
Because we have had a data center come before.
Yeah, we have one in the works right now, so.
Oh, 'cause we had one in the past. Dennis, I think you were?
Oh, I heard about it, I wasn't aware of that.
Alright, I wasn't sure, so...
Okay.
Alright, so, uh, hey, were there any, any more discussion on Article two before I jump into the, the more definitions in Article three?
No, thank you.
Okay. So Article three, uh, had plenty of discussion on the definitions, again, I'm not gonna go through each of these unless we wanna pull them, uh, but added several definitions, uh, accent lighting, um, did up, also update that, uh, accent lighting definition to clarify for, uh, flag pulls, uh, and, uh, percentage as well, that it can be permitted for that. Beverage distribution, uh, buffer yard, data center dwelling unit, marijuana dispensary, news media authority, and sales trailer were all definitions that we had discussed adding from the previous version, and if I, uh, updated various definitions for the articulated facade, which previously was articulated corner facade, corner facade, uh, that definitely needed to be cleaned up, uh, it was, uh, carport, we talked about that definition and the sides of it, uh, so added clarity on that. Clinic, egress window, uh, facade, foot candle, group home, jed, uh, kennel, micro brewery, micro distillery, pilaster, private garage, uh, school, uh, freestanding sign, stoop, swimming pool, and utility generation facility, all had definitions updated based on our discussions. If you wanna go through the specific changes in those, we can...
Do you have any updates on what trustees are doing with the marijuana dispensaries? 'Cause I know that's here in Article three, and it's, so it's now in the code.
Well, yeah, sorry, Dennis, it is in the code as a definition, um, but when you look at the use table, uh, it's not permitted within any district because the trustees passed a special resolution to allow just the two, and that there are two in the works. Now, if one falls through, which is still unknown, we might wanna adjust that. I don't know how we'll do that, that's a later thing, but...
Well, and so the, the resolution that the trustees passed also specifically regulates, uh, marijuana dispensary as a retail use, um, so we actually, for our purposes...
So we're going to have two, period?
Most likely.
Okay.
One and a half.
Yeah.
Well, we have the one, how, or...
The one on Orange and twenty-three is definitely happening.
Orange and twenty-three.
Where's that at? Where Ninja Car Wash is, at the corner.
Which car wash?
Ninja.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's where the church used to be.
Yeah, the little church was there, and it was so close to the, the street was.
Um, the, the other one has been tabled till no date certain, um, so I don't know what that looks like just yet.
So that'll be three, because I thought the one on Powell Road...
So that's the one that's tabled, they have not made a decision on that one.
Okay.
Yeah.
But for the purposes of the zoning resolution, uh, we added a, uh, a definition for it, but again, uh, per ruling of the trustees, it is considered a retail use for zoning purposes. But there are other rules that govern it. Any other definitions that we want to discuss?
I think that's a great section to add, all those definitions.
Yeah.
'Cause we had none.
I think that is absolutely awesome to put those in there.
Yeah, that, I, that's something that was severely lacking about our current zoning code, is that it's very much been lacking on the definitions.
Yes, no doubt about that.
As new potential items come up and new definitions come up or revisions, is it just you come back to the commission and ask for updating conclusions?
And, you know, that, that will happen, it will happen, that, at various points, not just for definitions, but I, you know, I'm sure with a completely new code, you know, we're trying to think of everything from every angle, but we probably won't think of everything, and so it's very possible in the next six to twelve months that we may come back to you all again and just say, "Hey, we need to tweak some things here."
That first loophole walks in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Actually, I do have one comment. Um, I'm just skimming through these things. Um, you have mixed-use building and mixed-use development. Mixed-use development, it's basically a mixture of residential and non-residential. Your mixed-use building requires you to have residential on the upper floors, whereas historically speaking, I would say, I'm not sure if it's still the case in old Lewis Center, but I know in Delaware, you would have retail on the first floor and potentially offices upstairs. Is there a reason why we're... I know office in terms of, um, rentable space has not been what it was before COVID, uh, but Evans Farm originally had provisions where they wanted commercial below and offices above at one time. So, is there a reason why we're not considering that? And Dennis, do you remember what I'm talking about?
Well, exactly, and, and all that, they came in for some revisions, and I get it, the world has changed, you know?
But it could change back, we don't know, 'cause everybody's being forced now to go back to the office.
Not everybody, but quite a few.
Not every few, not a four shoe back.
Just you wait.
I, I went to the office during COVID, so I was glad to be there by myself.
Yeah, I don't...
Uh, no, there's, so, no, there's no specific reason, I think, if, uh, if we want to, uh, we can revise that definition of the mixed-use building, I don't have an issue with that.
Okay, well, it's, it's sort of, what are you...
I don't know.
Envisioning for the future.
Well, is that what you, you wanna define the mixed use, to, to what it is? You wanna define...
That's what it is, but it defines.
It, well, it's defined that...
With retail on the first floor, housing on the second.
And, yeah, on the upper floors, but, but, so, as I said, historically speaking, in some areas, you would have retail on the first floor, offices on the upper levels, even something simple like retail on the first floor and a Masonic Lodge, which might be considered entertainment on the upper floors.
So if we took the floors out, would that help?
So, yeah, what do you, what do you, I mean, to me, I think it should be, I guess, an open...
Can it be anything?
Yeah.
I was gonna say, it can be whatever mix you want.
Yeah, you want, yeah, yeah, that's what...
A spa can be on the...
So, to amend the mixed-use building definition to not distinguish what type of use it is per floor, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I guess, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah, which is what you have sort of under mixed-use development, it's clear that you need to have a variety of, um, residential and non-residential uni- uses, and for me, a mixed-use building should also be the same, and then you can figure out however you wanna mix it up. Exactly, by layers, by blocks, whatever.
And add.
Not on a...
Because that definition probably came from Evans Farm, I mean, Evans Farm, what we did.
Uh, our consultant did a lot of, like, that, just added a bunch of definitions for us, and then we, so, I don't think there was any intent or per, I don't, I'd wanna say, not that we didn't care, just like, I don't, that's, I don't think we've even got it until now, so...
Standard language.
Yeah.
I think it was for standard, exactly, just the way things have been done with those.
Alright, thank you.
Any other definitions?
If I find something, I'll send you a whole email, but so far, I'm happy. That just caught my, 'cause I'm glad you finally...
Yeah.
Glad we finally are making provisions for mixed use.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other definition discussion?
Let's roll along.
Alright, so Article four, uh, it's a fairly short article, just kind of listing the districts and zones and the purposes, uh, so based on our discussion, we removed the campus institutional district, uh, and then added the C2 district, which as a reminder, is a holdover from our current code, we do have properties zoned in that, but, uh, updated the document so that it was included in all sections, so in Article four, uh, it's consistent with all the districts and zones. Article five, uh, is a big one, uh, because that's all the uses. I, I didn't list out every single change that we made to the use table, because there were so many, uh, but we tried to capture all the, the changes in uses, uh, that we discussed, uh, in our meetings on the use table. So if you see any in the use table that look right or look wrong, then feel free to let me know. One further item on the use table, we tried to update it alphabetically according to your feedback, we're still in the process of that, the formatting of the table is giving us some...
You've ever tried to do three hundred pages in Word documents? It's challenging.
'Cause even the headers missed out on this page.
Oh, yeah. It, well, I mean, at the end of the day, it'll all be cleaned up and page numbers and everything, but, and we hope to actually link a lot of the stuff, too, so if you have, like, a PDF version...
So you'll have hot links.
They're getting high tech.
I can't promise that now, but the future is the goal.
Question on the numbering system, like, we went from Article five to Article seven, am I missing something here, or?
Uh, so, in the, uh... Where do we go from Article five to Article seven?
No, it's Article six here, on page ninety-nine, midway page. It is a page ninety-nine. Look halfway down the page, it's Article six. You didn't get that one? You got the red, you didn't get the right book. Is that the one that you just got delivered?
On the top, it says Article five.
Yeah, but if you look at halfway on page ninety-nine, it's Article six.
Yeah, but the next page is all titled Article five.
That may have been a document error.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Okay, I know it makes sense, okay.
Yeah, it says Article six, but it...
There, there is an Article six, there are some articles where we skip over them, uh, that just say reserved, because they were previous, uh, active districts, and now they are not, but Article six should be in there.
Some formatting also, bring it up, so there it is.
Yeah, so we are still working to work out all the formatting.
Okay.
I think it's...
Page ninety-nine through, I'm gonna make, yeah.
Or it's a formatting issue.
Yeah, I think it was a format, I think that they forgot to change it to Article six, 'cause it's all talked about Lewis Center here.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, yeah, so like the header or something, okay.
Or you don't have a section break, so it's, still thinks it's in section five, not section six.
That's right.
Exactly.
You said, um, maybe I'm misunderstanding, uh, 5.1010, updated adult entertainment language, I went back to, to match the state law. Uh, is this exactly what the state law says? 'Cause you used the term, a building is used for sexually oriented businesses, and you said that you were, if I understood this correctly, I was getting rid of that one, instead of sexually oriented businesses?
Yeah.
And then I looked at the definition, and of course, the definition is not accurate.
Alright, uh, so, previously, we had, uh, there were two terms in the zoning code, uh, which was sexually oriented businesses and then adult entertainment businesses. Uh, we consolidated those just into adult entertainment businesses, but then, uh, we made it clear, which I believe is, since C, uh, that, five, yeah, 5.10c, that basically they're one and the same, so the terms are interchangeable, but everywhere else in the zoning resolution, it should say, uh, adult entertainment businesses, because that's what's on the use table.
Yeah, so it's, it's, I guess, it's mentioned as, is your, is it your intentions to make the phrase sexually oriented businesses, adult entertainment businesses?
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so then that's peppered here in this 5.10, sexually oriented businesses seems to be a, is what it's written as.
Yeah, so the question I have, 'cause I think in the past, we had things such as, um, I just wanna call them poker parlors, pool halls, any sort of establishment that had games of chance, that, um, or arcades that are not catered towards youth. I, I don't know how to put it, but... Included in the adult entertainment as well, so it wasn't just, dare I say, sexually oriented businesses, but it was businesses... but it was businesses that catered to games of chance, arcades, stuff like that.
So the, the focus on this is specifically, uh, adult businesses. So the, the definition is, uh, an adult arcade, uh, adult bookstore, adult novelty store, adult video store, adult cabaret, adult motion picture theater, adult theater nude or semi-nude model studio, or sexual encounter establishment. So those are the specific establishments.
So that means if I wanna open a pool parlor next to a park, I can?
What, they doing a pool parlor?
I'm just saying.
As somebody who spent plenty of time in pool parlors.
You haven't heard that before? Uh, I actually born in New Orleans, but anyway.
A lot of this is determined by the Ohio revised code, so, um, and we made it a conditional use in one district, but.
I mean, so when I was living in New Orleans, um, they legalized gambling, and that was a very, very big deal. What was that?
Back then.
Back then, yes, yes.
It's right around the corner.
Yeah, and so the other thing that we did in, uh, five point ten A, uh, and I hope this red line change made it in, uh, such uses may also be referred to as adult entertainment establishments, as defined collectively and individually, both in this resolution and in Section twenty-nine point, twenty-nine zero seven point three nine of the O R C, uh, so that we covered both our definition plus the state's definition.
Okay.
And that's what we can regulate.
Okay.
And I think we had a discussion on, on B here, B one, uh, where isn't it okay to have all of them together? Like, why do we want a thousand feet separation between two of them? If both of them are adult entertainment.
They're a little different.
Yeah, so, um, and this brings me back to planning school, where there are kind of two schools of thought. One is to group them together like that, so that you, you have them just, you know, kind of isolated in the corner of the township.
You can have a red light district.
Uh, I think the the general consensus, uh, in the planning field is that when you group businesses like that together, it does, it kind of exponentially increases the potential for crime and shady dealings. Generally, the best practice is to try to separate them as, as best.
Robin, you could probably remind me how we've been, how Orange Township has done a great job of essentially keeping those out. Have we restricted and only allowed them to certain areas? I've kind of forgotten, cause we have nobody show up, but. What have we done to have kept most, all those out? We've done something, cause they have.
I mean, I, I think it's a mixture of, uh, the language that we have in the zoning code is pretty restrictive currently. Uh, and then two, I mean, honestly, just the, the land prices here are high enough that it, it doesn't attract those types of establishments, so we don't even get many proposals for them.
I think that's going to change with the marijuana dispensaries. Sorry to say that, but I think that, that you've just lowered everything to when you, when you've done that. So I think that, that could be a few, just why I was asking is that if somebody wanted to, wanted to put something like that next door to the marijuana dispensary, there'd be nothing that would prevent them from doing it. If they would combine the land and they came in and proposed that, there is nothing in the code that would prevent them.
Well, they would have to rezone, they would have to do it in the industrial district and go to the B Z A for a conditional use, so.
Okay. So, yeah, they, they could, they could be there. Cause, cause I, cause I don't think, and where, where the way things are changing, that the land prices are are gonna be set there to keep, keep some things and people out, forget about that as a, as a barrier. That, that worked, that worked for a while, but that's not gonna work forever.
You can't prohibit it entirely.
Well, yeah, I know that. I realize that, I realize that. So we've done some of the things that have kept them out, and maybe it has been essentially land prices that have done that.
Yeah, and I don't know, some of the dispensaries, not always, uh, I mean, with the requirements of dispensaries nowadays, I don't know if that seediness is quote unquote, seediness is.
You ever been in a city that's had it? Ever seen one?
Uh, what, the dispensary?
Yeah. You go through, well, go through Denver. I was just in Denver.
There's an exception to the rule.
I, I saw several in Denver. I saw the communities there, and they were out bad communities, but, but, but they weren't the level of communities that's typically in Orange Township.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
One last question on the same thing. Do you want to also include the retail? Retail is different from adult entertainment, right?
Yes.
And by separating our, no, we don't see retail here on the list. So, obviously, a retail oriented business would be very upset to have.
So you're thinking of, dare I say, like the porn shop next to the?
Like a, like a lion's den or?
Yeah, one of those places.
No, don't we want to have thousand feet away from retail space?
I guess the reason for this discussion, from my point of view, is, is.
Don't we want to include like number nine?
A separation, yeah. So that even, even a, the retail is, a basic retail is a thousand.
Is there any language that can be written to limit them to certain areas? You said, alright, you have to go to the industrial one. That's what I'm trying to do. Yes, they're, they're allowed, yes, we can outlaw them, but are there things we can do that can limit where they are? Or limit, limit their positions?
Issue would be that it would be like all facilities, which means you, you wouldn't necessarily have like a strip shopping mall, or, you know, it would have to be a freestanding building almost.
Yeah, I, I, and we could check with legal. I think the issue would be, since we're saying that it can't be near a residential district boundary, and then essentially what is commercial, it would be permitted almost nowhere.
Which is what we previously had. You could only have it in an industrial area.
Sorry for the evening.
Oh, no.
Okay, um, so briefly, the, for the rest of Article Five, uh, remove zoning permits for food trucks. They still have to obey the building setback, so we do have some regulations if they're parking right on the edge of a property. But we will not issue permits for them necessarily. Five point zero six, cleaned up a lot of the language about home occupations, which is home-based businesses. There was a table that I think was can, causing more confusion than clarity, so we just removed that, um, and added some additional language in there. One thing we did add, which is in our current code, uh, we added language that avoids a conditional use for a home occupation upon sale of the property. Uh, so if a house sells, then new owners would have to reapply for the same home-based business.
No, I was just thinking if the I'm just trying to think if, uh, if an insurance agent, I don't know what the home uses are, but, um, you know, that was part of the sales story. But they have to come back to apply, to use the same home that was already being used.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, it's a process, but it's pretty administrative. I mean, as long as they meet the criteria, it should be a no-brainer to continue it on, it's just, if it's a different ownership.
Yeah, so the other thing too is, uh, in the new code, we, we separate out minor home-based businesses versus major. Uh, minor is just administrative approval, and then major has to be approved by the B Z A. If you're minor, then you just have to reapply for the permit. So like insurance agent, something small would be that. But it would be like if you have, uh, you know, a retail, you know, some kind of thing where you're selling something out of your home, where you're having customers come, then that would be the major home occupation where you do have to go to the B Z A again if there's new owners. Uh, added some language clarifying private garages. Five point zero nine, we talked about, uh, exempting inflatable and collapsible pools. Uh, did that, but did add a requirement that they have to be covered if they're over twenty-five inches of in-depth, uh, which is over two feet, which most of them are under the two feet, so. But just in case somebody tried to get around the pool coverage requirement that way. Adult entertainment, we talked about. Five point eleven, had a lot of text in that one, uh, still working on that with legal. That's our telecommunications towers and the processes for what happens if somebody wants to put a new cell tower in, which is delightful. I've, I've had a lot of fun, uh, coming up with that language. We're still working, uh, on legal with that. So that's kind of one of the few items that's still in flux a little bit. But that is all new. Uh, five point fourteen was the solar, uh, kind of based on our discussion, we clarified a lot of that language. So, the general gist is that, um, small solar facilities being utility scale solar, and then the ground mounted, uh, solar facility, their conditional uses. Uh, rooftop solar is permitted everywhere.
Robin, back on, um, I guess, five point zero six, and maybe you've already spoken to this, and I apologize if I missed it, automobile repair and related services. Yeah, on the permanent sign, signage just says error, reference, source not found. Is there intention to be something there?
Um, so I think, and that's one of the formatting issues that we're working around. That was the, so we had that table that I mentioned that was causing more confusion, that's where that was.
Yeah, I think something may have been linked before, and then when it got removed, this error message, well, cause you might see that a couple of times.
I was gonna say, so when I see that, I should interpret it's probably from the table, okay. Something even thought on that food truck. I'm, I'm stuck on the food truck story, and I know we got rid of it from having to come, but I, I thought there was some story about if it's there more than X number of days, they had to do something.
On a public street or a private property?
Public street, I thought.
Um, so right now, that would be more of a policy decision outside of zoning, um, but this point, if it is, uh, if their parking is allowed, then it's allowed as long as it. Yeah. Now, we actually, tomorrow, we'll be discussing this, because we've had, it's more semi-truck related, but we've had some significant, significantly large vehicles parking on our public streets and trying to figure out the best way to regulate that, and whether that is enforcement overnight or. But as of now, a food truck that's parked legally on a public street can stay there as long as possible.
I don't know, I had in my mind something about fourteen days story, but I, I get, I may have just made that up.
Wasn't that with the ref, changing? I was thinking it was with our signage, our signage that goes over and over. We said that if it was so.
Oh, um, oh, did we have a mobile home? Or wasn't there like something that used to, like, that was on private property?
Yeah, maybe that's what it was.
In the front, in our old code.
It was, it was the story on a food truck on a private property, is there, uh?
I would say it's an H O A. Matter, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have an answer for that, unfortunately.
No worries, thanks. I have nothing else on five.
Last call on Article Five. We're getting into the districts and zones now, so we're moving right along. Article Six is the Lewis Center Village overlay. Uh, so, based on our discussion, we did, uh, kind of divide that into two areas. So the, the residential subarea of that overlay and the commercial subarea, which just reflects the current land use. Hopefully, that new map made it into your, uh, into your document with the residential and commercial areas in there. Uh, and then, based on our discussion, we've, uh, increased the setbacks, uh, on the Lewis Center Village overlay. Uh, so we basically increased that to mirror the neighborhood zone setbacks that we had, which was twenty-five foot in the front, ten foot on the side, and thirty feet in the rear. And then size setbacks are zero feet for cross-property structures. So again, just a reminder, those are the really small lots, uh, that, you know, we're trying to allow use of those parcels without allowing a, a ton of tiny homes necessarily, so we, uh, the best approach that we could think of was to bump up those setbacks, uh, so that they don't, they're not right next to each other, or they're not right next to a, a neighbor's property. But they're the same dimensional standards as a, a neighborhood.
Was that what the representative was advocating for?
And we had also talked about, um, possibly not allowing any divergences in that district. I think in discussion with legal counsel, we did feel that that people should be allowed to ask for divergences. Uh, that doesn't mean that they'll be approved, but they, they can be requested. As a reminder, that overlay does come before you all, uh, and it would just be a one-step process where the zoning commission would approve any overlay requests.
Basically, if they couldn't have divergences, one of the old buildings burns down, they might not be able to rebuild it.
Well, not necessarily, I guess, in, possibly. It would, the overlay would have to be applied to that parcel already. For that to be a.
They would be grandfathered, I mean, they could build exactly where it was. It would be grandfathered and or not, legally not conforming.
Any other questions or discussion on the Lewis Center Village?
We've already talked about it, but Lewis Center can't be applied to some new piece of.
Right, yeah, it is geographically.
Yeah, overlay districts can be targeted areas, so.
Okay, that, that was.
It was a good, good discussion.
Alright, um, so the next one I have is just a, a catch-all for all the districts in zone, so just as a formatting thing, we removed the use tables from the individual district sections, uh, so that kicks back to Article Five, which is the master use table. Just made the document a little less clunky, uh, but we do have the individual standards listed out in the districts, just not the uses.
Hopefully, we can link it.
Yeah, I, I think that.
Like, if you are referring to a specific district, you, it'll, you'll click a button to go up to the use table, is a perfect world situation.
Alright, uh, so moving on to Article Seven, uh, there was no change from our discussion. That was the farm residential. Article Eight was the campus institutional, uh, which we removed based on our discussion. Article Nine, uh, we bumped up the setbacks a little bit, and that is the Article Nine is community living, which is our multi-family zone. Uh, again, bumped up those setbacks to thirty-foot front and rear, fifteen-foot on the side, uh, and then based on our discussion, reduced the maximum height to thirty-five feet in the community living, which is basically the new multi-family zone.
That was an increase, right, the, to the thirty-five percent, with, eh, thirty-five feet?
Uh, so that's where it is currently. We had proposed increasing it, but we, after discussion, were keeping it at thirty-five.
But they could request.
Correct, they, they can request a variance, or they could try to go into a planned district.
I think that was because of a lot of, if they're abutting, single-family residential use, there were a lot of complaints. They don't want like a five-story apartment building next to their two-story house, looking into their backyard.
So Article Ten is the planned unit district. That's kind of a perpetual planned district that we'll have. So added some language that just clarified that Article Twenty-One, which is the general development standards, so the parking, lighting, landscaping, all that applies to Article Ten. Uh, we added a requirement, uh, that commercial projects in the planned unit district have to go into our J E D, uh, which is our joint economic development district, that allows the township to help collect some income tax from those businesses. Uh, so that is a new requirement. We may end up amending that language to kind of be a more generic economic development agreement with the township. So, that is a new requirement. We may end up amending that language to kind of be a more generic economic development agreement with the township. A new requirement in there, and then the review language, it was, it's pretty vague purposefully, but we also felt it was appropriate to add some review criteria regarding conservation of natural resources, where if there is a subdivision of development that proposes keeping a good portion of the site preserved as open space, then we felt that that should be a, a criteria that we take into account. Anything on Article ten? Articles eleven and twelve, there were no changes?
Article twelve, I think, the maximum building height went up to fifty height, that was, that was a change that we discussed.
Yes, so, we did discuss it, ultimately, we ended up leaving it at fifty feet. We had discussed potentially, you know, some kind of condition if they went up to sixty feet.
Because that was forty, and then we asked you for it to go fifty.
No, I think it was fifty, and you asked to go to sixty because some of the warehouses, or some of the factories.
Article.
Had high overhead doors and cranes that needed to go up to sixty. I said overhead doors, cranes, whatever.
You'll have to leave, okay.
Yeah, got it, got it. Yeah, so fifty feet is how it is in our current code, we kind of felt that keeping it at fifty may be best for now. If a project does want to go above fifty, they could ask for a variance or go into a planned district.
And then, with the justification that it's to fit the manufacturing crane or whatever.
Sure.
As opposed to just maximize the site and make money.
Yeah, and, so one of the factors that the B Z A looks at when they're looking at area variances that have a specific standard is whether or not the variance is substantial, and the number that they kind of have that cutoff is twenty-five percent. And so, a ten-foot increase from fifty to sixty, that would be a, a twenty percent increase, so it would be under that threshold of twenty-five percent. So, we felt like, if there is a project that needs the sixty feet, then that would be a reasonable variance that they could ask for.
Robin, real quick, back in, I don't know if we're finished with this, if we're finished with this, then I'll bring up my.
Go ahead.
Back in Article ten about the JED.
Yeah.
If, if it's an existing spot, and they come in and rezoned, and somebody's coming to do something else, does the JED apply at that point, or is it only if it's?
If a JED is placed on a parcel, then it would apply to all businesses on that parcel.
Yeah, but the JED came along not too long ago, right?
Are you saying if there's no JED now?
If there's no JED now, and then they, somebody comes in, or somebody buys, and they come in, they want to do something else, does JED get applied?
So, if they're amending their current planned district, then no, if they're creating a new planned district through this text, then yes.
Okay, 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 all right, that makes sense. Is that, is that spelled out, or does it need to be spelled out, or it's just an assumption?
I don't know that it needs to be spelled out because it's specifically in this district's text.
Okay, gotcha.
So, if it's not using the Article ten process, then it just doesn't apply.
Okay, very good.
Article thirteen, we had discussed what to do with the C two district. As a reminder, that's a current straight district that we have ten or so properties that are zoned at currently. After discussing with legal counsel, we felt the best course of action was to basically leave it as it is. So, we updated the formatting, but all the standards are remaining the same as they are today. It's possible that down the line, we could look at rezoning those and kind of rolling those into another new commercial district, but for the time being, it seems easiest just to let that lie, and we'll look at making changes later. So, all of those standards match what's in the zoning resolution today. Articles fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, no changes. Article eighteen, which is the mixed use, we added a requirement for true mixed use, which is a minimum of twenty percent of the overall floor space has to be commercial, just to prevent somebody from rezoning to a mixed use and then only building apartments. Just trying to close that loophole before it's opened. And then, the setbacks were increased slightly, so they're the, essentially the same as the multifamily, so thirty-foot front, thirty-foot rear, fifteen-foot side setback. All right, that's all the districts and zones. Any more discussion on those, any questions?
What did you say you were trying to, that you, I apologize, I missed part of what you just said a few minutes ago. You, you did something to, because you anticipated.
Yeah, for mixed use, basically saying, if you're rezoning to mixed use, then twenty percent of the floor area of all your buildings has to be non-residential, so there has to be a true mix of residential and commercial uses.
Does that fit the definition that we just?
Yes.
Confirmed, clarified, okay.
Yeah.
Why does mixed use is the only one that has a maximum front setback? All of those don't have.
So, the idea with a mixed use is to create a more walkable environment, and generally, the, the planning theory is that if you have buildings that are too far back from the street, and it's all parking in front, then it doesn't create that walkable environment. But if you have buildings that are, excuse me, buildings that are closer to the street, it creates that streetscape, cars slow down a little bit more, and it creates that walkable environment.
And I noticed you did have a provision that you can do cross-property or whatever, so you could have attached.
Correct.
If need be.
So, thirty to fifty feet, minimum maximum.
All right, on to Article twenty-one, which is the general development standards. So, as a reminder, these apply basically across all districts and zones unless otherwise noted.
I was actually gonna make something.
Yeah.
Bring something up with the mixed use requirement.
Sure.
You have a minimum of twenty percent of the gross floor area of, and all buildings within a parcel within the mixed use must be dedicated to non-residential use. Do you want to do something the reverse to make sure that if you have a non-residential building, that part of it has to be residential? Exactly, so you, what, so what you don't have is a case where we've seen of you have a large parcel, and, you know, your commercials here, then your apartments are over there, and they're still saying it's mixed use, but there's no connectivity between the two.
I'm open to that, I, I think the goal in that language was to allow some flexibility to allow for, you know, as long as the, as long as they're connected somehow, because I believe that.
So, my, I'll just use an example of.
Am I on the right part? I'm sorry, what section is this for?
Um, mixed use, Article eighteen, yeah. B J's came in, and they said that they were mixed use because they had B J's and they had an apartment complex. So, therefore, they were mixed use, but there's no actual connectivity between the apartment complex and the B J's.
Yeah, but isn't the objective and, or part of the objective for mixed use is to make just that, some apartments to be available? I mean, even though there are no, then I get it.
They're not connected.
Yeah, but isn't, but wasn't that the incentive for the whole thing, or isn't that the encouragement anyhow? So, if they have fulfilled the idea of providing residence next door.
Well, so, for me, the idea of mixed use is to provide a variety of uses, so you can do things like have shared parking, where parking for residential and/or businesses would vary during times of the day, where you could actually walk from your apartment to the grocery store or the restaurant without worrying about getting hit by a car. You know?
It's next door.
Down the street, whatever. But.
So, do you wanna, I, I don't know, look, do we require, like, a mixed-use building? Or are we trying to require some connectivity, or, I don't know what would.
This does, as, as, twenty percent has to be non-residential, can we also say twenty percent has to be minimum residential?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I think we are, but.
So that, yeah, so that, so that, you know, if you're a residential building, you need to have twenty percent of your floor area be a non-residential use, if you're a non-residential building.
Okay, twenty percent.
Could you have twenty percent or some provision to make sure you have residential with it, so you don't get a big box store?
I don't know if I would go that far.
I don't know if you need to do the twenty percent, or you just say it's all mixed-use buildings, because our definition says that it has to be.
Exactly.
I don't know.
Yeah, right.
That's why I asked for that change.
Yeah.
So that you could have a variety of uses, not just and/or.
Well, I think, so the issue with that is that we don't, uses other than mixed-use buildings are permitted in the mixed-use district. There's a wide variety of uses that are permitted, so in theory, somebody could come in. I, you know, I think, and I'm, I'm, I understand the concern, and I agree with it, I'm trying to figure out how best to.
How best to word it, because what, like I said, what I don't want to see is an apartment complex and a big box store with no connectivity, because that's not the purpose of a mixed-use district.
Yeah, so, in the B J's situation, the Shawne scene apartments would have to have a commercial component in it with this code.
Yes, but the B J's wouldn't have to necessarily have a residential, or even maybe a.
Right, but at least there's some, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, so it's, it's tricky. One, when one thing that we did tighten up in this is that the mixed use doesn't allow for big box, so that, you know, it gets rid of the auto-oriented uses, it gets rid of large-scale retail, focuses more on that neighborhood scale. We don't have any requirements that the buildings all be mixed use. I have gotten pushback from developers previously that, you know, they didn't want to have mixed-use buildings, they wanted to have apartments next to a, a commercial area. And I, in general, my feedback to them has been, well, okay, as long as they're integrated together thoughtfully, I, I think we're open to that. So, I'm, again, I'm open to language that encourages that.
But I like just what you said there, as long as they're integrated thoughtfully, so that that piece is a part of that component. Here's my story, let me show you how they're connected, you know, I mean, some people may not want to live above.
The B J's.
Yeah, exactly, and I, I understand that, or they don't want to live next to whatever business.
But how can I?
But how can I make sure that I can go from my house and, or apartment, and walk to the grocery store?
I think the limiting the uses in this type of district will, will help, like, the smaller scale. I'd like to think it would be more connected because of that, I mean, it'd be silly to have a bunch of apartments, and then like, a Starbucks over here or something.
Yeah, but that's what we've gotten.
Yeah.
But, but is there an advantage to wanting to zone this mixed-use versus commercial? Whether is there an advantage to B J's mixed-use versus?
Well, and that's the other thing too, is commercial tends to, you know, the commercial zone is less restrictive, the mixed-use is more restrictive in terms of the uses and the development standards.
You know, so, yeah, so, yeah, if you want to restrict mixed-use, then B J's never should have been mixed-use if you wanted to restrict it. You know, I guess, like, that's the point, but, but is, but is there an advantage to, to zone to mixed-use versus zoning a commercial? You already said it's easier to commercial, so why?
In terms of the development standards, yes, I mean, well, the, the advantage is you can also have, you know, income stream from residential.
The advantage of this district is, it didn't exist, so if there's somebody that wanted to do mixed uses, they could just, like, plop into this, as opposed to fighting through. Yeah, the battle of Evans Farm, I guess. Now, is it gonna be a frequent inquiry? I don't know, we don't, we've never had another Evans Farm-like concept come to us, but.
It would be nice.
I'm, I'm trying to think about the advantage, because if there's, if there's no particular advantage.
The advantage is there's a district that would, could work for them as opposed to not, never before.
So, what's the, like Dennis said, what's the carrot?
Yeah, so, they can go to a planned district and ask for everything and anything, but we can just keep saying no, because there's no standards that we are working off of, it's just a blank slate.
Why in the world did, I didn't, I guess I must have forgotten that, because I was here for B J's, that that was mixed-use. Why in the world did they go for mixed-use, because, yeah, there's a.
It was part of the twenty-three overlay, I thought.
Yeah, well.
It was zone plan commercial.
Yeah, yeah, so, because overlay was, I don't think they could go the overlay at that point. It was a planned commercial with a divergence to allow for housing, because we don't have any mixed-use concept.
Okay, so I guess I wouldn't even call B J's and that whole thing mixed-use.
I think that would be.
I mean, because that mixed-use is gonna be confusing.
Yeah, it's weird.
Exactly, that's the discussion, which doesn't need to be.
But it was considered mixed-use, and that, I'm like, that's not what we want.
Well, I think the applicant was saying it was mixed-use, because that was their pitch to.
Get approved, and have it fit with the twenty-three overlay.
I remember how they came in with all that plan, and.
Yeah, if that, a similar concept like that were to happen, it would probably go through the planned district route, because it wouldn't fit the mixed-use, I understand the, there's, what's the incentive of going into here, but because it's now a new straight district, it's a lot easier to get through if you can match with the standards. It's a trial and error, I don't know, if people don't ever use it, then we can get rid of it, if people use it.
I, I can see why they did that, now, it was a difficult piece of property, very difficult, because of the traffic in and out, and it still is.
Yeah.
It's very difficult.
I don't know why Walmart won't cooperate.
I mean, while I first thought, and I didn't like it because of the difficulty.
I think they ought to sue Walmart. I don't know, I don't know about that, but still.
All right, yeah, I don't think that's.
I just, I think the difficulty is to, you know, to try to not be too prescriptive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But still encouraging that, I'm open to, you know, we can try to work on some language to type that up.
If you can figure something out to actually encourage mixed-use, because that's my concern, is that.
To me, I'm not sure the buildings have to be connected.
Yeah, that's, that's why I really like his thoughtfully.
Yeah, and we could, we could include some aspirational language like that, but it's, you know, that doesn't really.
Well, maybe the buildings, but the complex has to be connected.
Yeah, yeah, I think we.
So that if it's not necessary, if the buildings aren't connected, you have a variety of mixed uses in the con, in the complex that are connected with.
By path.
By paths, trails, sidewalks, streets, whatever, but that.
And you support and take care of all of those things.
With, with the new code and things being defined and, and like this, somebody's gonna walk in and talk about mixed-use, and we would agree, and if they weren't that, we would say, no, it should be zoned something else, going through another plan. But I think it wasn't well-defined when B J's came in, I realize that's what they presented, that that wasn't defined. Now it is, now it's defined, I, I think even that open.
Would there be a neighborhood commercial at this point, if they come here?
I thought neighborhood commercial is limited to like a small, small size.
Yeah, it's limited by square footage.
By square footage, right?
Yeah.
So, I, and I think we can add that as a condition, just to, zoning staff can add language regarding walkability and connectivity to the mixed-use district, and we can work on some light there.
The only thing is, I don't see, I was reading through the neighborhood commercial, and I don't see the square footage limitation mentioned.
So, it's, it's based on, it's in the definitions, I believe, under retail.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, retail store large, retail store medium, retail. Yeah, so retail store large, retail store medium, retail store small. Okay, anything else before we move on to article twenty-one?
I have a question, uh, maybe it's for the madam chair here. Are we allowed to strike comments that were made on the record that we wanna revise?
Yeah.
Well, you can just. What I really meant was.
I'd like to revise that comment about they should, uh, sue Walmart, but, um. It's to just reflect that it is a challenge between the two properties going back and forth and so. I wish they could work.
That comes back, that comes back to the concept of connectivity.
Yes, connectivity, there you go, yes.
Want to have a connected community, not silos or enclaves of properties.
Definitely.
It's been amended on the record.
Thank you. I appreciate that opportunity.
We all say things we want to amend sometimes.
All right, on to general development standards. Uh, so in the lighting section, which is twenty-one point zero three. Based on discussion, we did add an exemption for flag lighting. In twenty-one point zero three, uh, C, we increased the maximum lighting temperature to five thousand Kelvin. It was previously three thousand.
Were, weren't we waiting on, um, no, maybe that was, uh, for that. I thought we gotta check something on, that didn't someone say that it was? I think you made the argument about what, what should be the appropriate number. Went back and forth and I thought there was gonna be a check.
Yeah, so I, I did some research and, and kind of four thousand was generally accepted. Did end up bumping that up to five thousand just to allow for all, all types of lighting.
All right, thank you.
Five thousand is considered daylight.
Okay, yeah.
We don't want this with the cool, bright lights because epileptic fits.
So we're trying to avoid. Twenty-three. Cool blue light.
Yeah, I saw that the other day. I saw that the other.
Maybe it's cool blue light, but it is not cool at all. It is distracting.
When did they do that? Because I, the day before I was just driving down, I didn't see it in the kingdom. The night and I was like, oh, they changed all the lights.
All right, in twenty-one point zero four, uh, we've talked about quite a bit. Uh, so we had that setback from commercial abouting residential. It's in our current code as a hundred feet. We're going to keep it as a hundred feet. So every time there's commercial industrial, it has to be at least a hundred feet away from residential. All right, twenty-one point zero five B, uh, this was the, um, architectural standards. And then the, um, the material standards, so really kind of simplified that down. So added some design elements, clarified that, uh, it's for new construction only. And that three of those building elements required every one hundred square feet, otherwise they could just put one on the side of a building and call it a day. But added windows as an option, uh, removed the articulated corner facade. Um, and then just had articulated facade to try to simplify that because I am, I am not an architect nor do I claim to be one. Uh, there was a table there which I think was causing confusion with the, uh, materials. So we got rid of the accent material requirements. Now, uh, the accent materials basically can be anything. Uh, but the, the primary material is the eighty percent requirements that is set. Uh, we did add vinyl siding, uh, as a permitted siding in that eighty percent as long as it's at least zero point four six inches in thickness.
Okay.
That was based on, the, the research that I found is zero point four four and higher is generally considered high quality vinyl. So when above and beyond that was zero point four.
Inches or in mils?
Uh, my, I can double check, but I believe it was inches.
Okay. Some places they specify it as, um, millimeters, um, so that's why, as long as you have the correct. Nomenclature.
Yeah, point zero, yep, inches.
Okay.
All right, uh, in twenty-one point zero six G, which is the landscaping. Clarified that native plant species are encouraged. And then we talked about adding a reference to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources list for what is considered, uh, native plants and invasive plants. Uh, and then we had a requirement previously that no more than twenty-five percent of a single plant could be planted on a landscape. Got rid of that, felt that was a little too restrictive. Twenty-one point zero nine, uh, was the buffer yards, uh, so this is, uh, basically screening requirements between zoning districts. Basically simplified that because there was a complicated table of which districts, abutted which districts and whether they got, uh, a type A. Which is a, a less intense buffer and, uh, versus a type B which is, uh, more intense. So just clarified that, uh, mixed use would have type A and then commercial industrial would have type B. Uh, screening requirements whenever they abut residential districts. Twenty-one point thirteen, uh, which is the parking, uh, we've talked about compact parking spaces, but ultimately got rid of those. Just since cars seem to be getting bigger, not smaller. Twenty-one point sixteen was shared parking. We simplified that. We had a fair amount of legalese in there where somebody could, um, you know, record. Something and get it updated by a lawyer and submit it to the township and have our legal counsel review it. It just seemed too complicated. So shared parking is allowed, but the, a lot of that legalese has been removed. Uh, and then twenty-one point eighteen, we have the requirement for pedestrian walkways which connect a building with the parking lot. But, uh, clarified that that's only for larger parking lots of fifty spaces or more.
You already checked to make sure that there has to be a pedestrian walkway. From the handicap parking to the building.
Yeah, that would be, um, ADA requirement.
Okay.
That's from the big discussion. No, that was the different, that was ADA regulated.
Anything on general development standards, questions or comments?
And we're now nine by eighteen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
No parking space, surely further than a hundred feet away from a pedestrian walkway. So. If Walmart wants to expand their parking space, it has to be within that hundred feet of the walk, pedestrian walkway.
So it, um, it has to be, each parking space has to be close to a walkway. The walkway can go through the parking lot.
Has defined that this is the walkway.
Right.
With like striping or something, right?
Yeah.
Anything else on article twenty-one?
Have you, uh, been able to get the fire department to understand that permeable pavers? Can be rated for their ranges?
So the language we have in there says that permeable pavers are allowed with, with, with written approval by the fire department. So, uh, they are allowed per zoning, uh, they would just need to get the fire department's separate approval.
So it's, we still have to convince the fire department that, okay. Right.
Are they not convinced?
No.
They are not.
Not in the past. I have shared information.
Have they been to the latest conference that says this should be allowed?
I don't know, but I did notice and thank you for the reduction, uh, if you have permeable pavers. You can get bonuses. For parking.
That's it, the heat, the fire department, I feel like the heat.
Uh, so with permeable pavers, the idea is to let the water filter. So you don't have to have as much strong water runoff containment and things like that, uh, and it'll also like help the environment. But they're concerned that the like substrate or the installation of the pavement cannot support the weight of a fire engine.
Okay.
I mean, that's just cuz, you know.
I know, yeah.
I mean, they, I mean, and also you can see like if the substrate isn't designed correctly, you'll see problems like where, um. Like the dumpsters are and where the garbage trucks always pick up eventually or, um, sometimes with like buses. Or heavy vehicles, you can see the, um, pavement eroding. Usually it's like asphalt and so that's why they recommend concrete pads by like dumpsters and things like that. Because the weight of the vehicles will erode. Um, and you'll end up with like.
Yeah.
Okay. Sunken portions of your parking lot where water will pool and be unsightly, I'm sorry.
All right, last call for article twenty-one.
Now you probably know more than you ever wanted to know.
Call edu- call education.
What was that?
I'm just wondering about cobblestones, uh, ways that were constructed by Rome back in the day. Are they permeable or not? It would be permeable, right, yeah, so.
All I know is in the city of Columbus, you do not wanna touch a street that has cobblestone and or brick pavers.
I like German village and.
I'm like German village areas of the short north.
Yeah.
Um, King Lincoln has them. They're scattered throughout neighborhoods. But it's a major civil issue cuz the city will try to make you repair the whole thing.
Oh, wow.
If you're just trying to, you know, get utilities going over there or something. Cuz they're, they were not designed for modern vehicles.
No, they weren't.
We'll just leave it at that.
All right, on the signage, article twenty-two, uh, so we'll pick back up where we left off with the electronic messages centers. So we, we talked about those being permitted for certain commercial uses, uh, but kind of blended on. They're only permitted for institutional uses, so schools, libraries, religious uses, uh, and government buildings. And there would be an eight second display requirement so that they're not constantly flashing.
Very good.
Uh, we talked about the wall sign, uh, allowance, so that's, uh, back up to three square feet per lineal wall. For, uh, wall mounted signs on buildings, that is what it is currently.
Actually, I noticed you have something for cornerstone inscriptions. Do you have something for, um? Let me try and think, like, the old Gooding Tavern has that little historical marker sign that the state has put up. Um, there's one, um, by the building, um, where, um, the Jaten Temple is.
What?
There's a, like, a, um, a state sign about like the building. They're like historical markers.
And I'm sorry, are you asking if those are allowed or?
They technically, I'm looking at certain signs are exempted. Um, I'm assuming those should be exempted because they're.
Historical landmarks.
Or just like, uh, any sort of state. Sort of signage, um. I don't know what you wanna call it, but it's a, it's a state supplied sign. Sometimes they're like by the historical, sometimes like.
State issued.
D- DOT signs.
State issued.
Core might have signs for Allen Creek.
We would have kept our old schoolhouse on Orange and Powell Road, we would have one up there.
Exactly, the little sign there.
They would have kept that schoolhouse there, but they didn't.
I mean, is there one for the, well, the township hall was moved there, but I think we actually have one for the township hall, even though it's not in the original location. Stuff like that is what I'm getting at.
The schoolhouse where?
Where, where, where that, where, well, township hall used to be there. It's really at the corner of Orange Road and. Or, or Old State. Corner of Orange and Old State, right there on that.
Where the veterans memorial is.
It used to be an old, old schoolhouse. And that, if there would, that was still there, there would be a historical marker from that.
So I would have.
Now the building that says the. Township hall?
Yeah, that, that, cuz then, then township hall moved there until it moved here, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I would say that they should be exempt from the side.
I, I suspect they are. I, I would suspect they already are.
It seems like it's, yeah, coming from state.
Yeah, it comes from state, a state historical sign. Who's gonna have an objection to that?
You would be surprised. Yes, um.
Yeah, so I, I think we can look into it with our legal counsel. I think we can probably craft an exemption for it. I, I, you know, I think our issue would be we can't regulate signs based on content, so we can't say like historical signs are, are exempt. Try to dance around.
Yeah, like I said, like so state or federal signs like, um, cuz the state or the federal ones would be like that. So I would have those as being exempt cuz, I mean, you have government signs in terms of traffic, but government signs in terms of. Information, whatever. So if you wanna craft a language.
Yeah.
And I always say that cuz I used to have to do research to get people those signs.
That's a good point. Nobody has ever approached us about a sign permit for those.
I, I think all the old stuff's gotten torn down at the last time, yeah. I mean, there, there was stuff there, but it's all, all gone.
Is the Jane, the house that's in front of the Jane Temple and then, um, Gooding Tavern or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah.
I think has a sign in front of it.
The rest of it got buried by Allen Creek. When Allen Creek came in, they flooded part of Orange Township.
Although I think there is a sign off Africa Road somewhere talking about the settlement that was there where they flooded.
I, I remember that when it flooded. We, we saw it as a bicycle racer. The club used to race up here, Orange Township back in the sixties and, and seventies. Back before all this was, was here. The schoolhouse was still there.
I'll just put work with legal counsel on government issued signage.
Yeah.
To see if it can be exempted from zoning or something.
Exactly. So that if I wanna national register mark in front of my house. I fill out the paperwork. All right, moving on.
Moving on, uh, all right, so twenty-two point zero nine C, we added the setback for the temporary signs that we discussed. So setback right away. We added, uh, limitation for the balloon and air activated graphics that they can only be active during business hours. Thank you for that. Uh, and then on, for temporary signs, we changed a lot of those, uh, time limitations, revised them downward. So the balloon and air activated signs are now permitted seven consecutive days, once per year, per business. Banner signs are now permitted twice per year and that is, uh, if there is a typo in there that says twenty-four, it's supposed to be two. Thank you to Sam, our intern, for catching that typo. So that is one of the modifications that you have, uh, pre-filled out for you. Is revised twenty-four to two times per year.
Yeah.
Uh, and then a thirty, thirty day limit on banner signs, uh, for new businesses. And then pennant signs were reduced to twice per year with a fourteen day limit.
That's that fourteen day thing, less, when you were talking about fourteen days, I was thinking about that.
All right, any questions or comments on signage?
No.
Why did we do the, the balloon, is the balloon active, like the wavy man thing?
I hate that thing.
And we've only, I mean, why did we say that was only once per year versus two times?
They're annoying.
I, I think, you know, it's something that's not allowed currently, so it's, you know, it's just letting businesses do it. Once per year for a, a big sale or event and.
No, I was just thinking if we're gonna do the banner. No, I was just thinking if we're gonna do the banner sign twice a year for thirty days, or whatever number of days that was, seems like you ought to let that.
I do think that the banners are a little less of true.
Yeah, yeah, they are, that other stuff.
Anything else on signs?
Some quick question.
Yeah.
As a residential, I, um, we say one wall sign permitted per individual residential purpose, one square foot. But, let's say if I name my house and inscribe it into the masonry of my home, like I would try, this is my home, it's my name, right? Is that, and that is exempted, so.
That's just being exempt under the cornerstone.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Carved into masonry. So it's, that's one of those things that, even with our signage code today, I don't think it would be illegal. I think the HOA would enforce it.
Although I learned something today about the HOAs, uh, which I guess is going to be appealed, but, um, that they are not, at least Delaware County says they can enforce, you know, like you, you know, somebody doesn't pay their HOA fees and you get the legal, the HOA has an attorney to take them to court, and they're saying, no, they can't take care of that anymore. They don't have the authority.
They can't put a lien on your house anymore?
Yeah, they, I thought they could, we hit that.
I think they still can.
No, this, this, this has just recently come down that, uh, they're saying that they don't have the right to do that, which I slightly applaud, but, um, you know, the question becomes how does the homeowner HOA enforce anything? But the short and long is that they send, you know, so they won't hear anymore, cases won't deal with it or what have you.
Oh, the courts won't.
The court has said.
Because we have put a lot of names on properties in our area.
Yeah, the court has said.
When it was on HOA.
Now, it's on appeal.
I'm thankful we don't get involved with the HOAs.
Yeah, it's on appeal, but.
You're one of the few. There's a family who's moved in, and they've never paid an HOA, their homeowners bills, for years, yeah.
That's a tough floor we don't want to get into.
Yeah.
We have nothing to do with the HOAs.
No, we don't.
Zip, zero, nada, nothing.
You're lucky, you don't have an HOA.
I don't have an HOA.
I know how hard.
Yes, you're lucky. Funny, no one likes the HOA.
Yeah, but everybody keeps signing up for them.
I know.
You know, get your neighbors to get rid of them, I mean, they're, they're to serve the community, if they don't do what you want, kick them out. You know?
That's because nobody wants to, um, like.
We're almost there.
Yes.
Continue.
I'm curious, um, and I can wait till the end to ask my curious question, or I can ask it now?
Go ahead.
Do you all use AI for anything, and will you feed, create a orange AI and feed this into it so that when you get applications, you feed it and say, tell me what the challenges are?
I'd say we have started to dip our toe into the AI waters, we do have, we, internally, we have an AI policy that we've adopted as a township, uh, I wouldn't say we, I, I've started exploring the uses in zoning, it's, the technology's not quite there yet, but I expect in the next couple of years it'll get there.
Yeah, we, you know, of course I work for an IT company, but we've developed where HUD policies, we can take a, any housing authorities' policy, fade into the system, and anytime something comes up, you can just.
Yeah, I mean.
Tell me the difference.
I've, I mean, I've used it, just having discussions here, you know?
Yeah.
What is, you know, what's the average Kelvin temperature, you know, just some, like, we use it a lot as like a first draft or just some like research, but as far as like making it a practice for, I, we're not there yet, I don't, I'm sure we could be, but.
And more and more companies are requiring the whole team to now learn.
Yeah.
You know, more about AI, so, you know, I was just curious as to whether or not that was like a step you all were thinking about.
Yeah, I'd say we're, we're thinking about it, but not quite.
Yeah, yeah.
Not quite there yet.
Can't get away from it, you can't even turn on your computer and it'll tell you, I'll co-pilot, I don't want you to co-pilot.
They're like, I'm in charge, not you.
All right, well, final thing that we updated is in Articles twenty-seven and twenty-eight, which we really didn't even discuss here as a commission, um, because most of that is policies and procedures that aren't substantially changing, the one change that I'll mention is that uh, state law recently changed that allows townships to not publish in the newspaper, uh, so for, I don't know if you were aware, but every time you all have a meeting, we publish it in the Delaware Gazette, uh, which is required by state law and our old zoning resolution, uh, the state law changed to allow us to do that on our website, uh, and social media, and so, uh, we updated the language in the zoning code to, uh, match the state law. Sorry, folks in the Delaware Gazette.
This is good, because.
Yeah.
Probably.
In economic development, people often get Googled, and when they Google my name, like, it gets spam, the first page is full of Delaware Gazette, Delaware Gazette, Delaware Gazette, okay, they don't know that I have a job so high, and they're like, okay. They get confused. This is good, because all of that spam that they get.
I mean, I would want to, I would want to be forty under forty in Columbus Business First.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
I was that many years ago.
You, you.
I was a four under forty.
I caught the cause, got it, yeah.
Very good, yeah.
Yeah, he has one.
Yeah, um, no, but the thing is, we want our work, that is how people are often reach out from all over the world, is if I want to set up a factory in Ohio, if it is a manufacturing factory, when you Google that, I want my name to show up.
Sure.
There, not, and when they, when they Google who's this person, and if it all, the first two pages is all about Delaware Gazette and all of that, they get confused.
It's a pretty big cost to the township too, just because of the amount of meetings, um, we can't change it until this code gets approved, but it's in there.
Any changes in twenty-nine?
One question, um, again, going back to, bless you, excuse me, Article eighteen, I believe. Yeah, I'm still trying to understand, Article eighteen, mixed use, and Article.
Oh, that requirement?
Oh. I lost it, one second. Commercial, uh, neighborhood commercial, C two. So you mentioned there was a difference in terms of.
Yeah.
Article thirteen in.
Yeah.
Article thirteen and Article eighteen. Uh, when I was looking these two, you mentioned that there is a square footage requirement in C two. I don't see that, and also in the definitions, I don't see neighborhood commercial anywhere, so.
Uh, so neighborhood commercial, and sorry if I was not clear, so neighborhood commercial is the name of the C two. The, I think when we were talking about neighborhood commercial, uh, in a general sense, that was the, the retail, the, that was subdivided by square footage.
Yes. That is, that is in the commercial corridors zone.
Correct.
Right? And C, so commercial corridor would apply to C two, all of them?
No, so they're, they're separate, but they allow for different things, so commercial corridor allows for small, medium, and large. The C two only, C two and the mixed use only allow for small or smaller medium.
Where does that, where does, so you could say that?
So that would be on the use table?
Yeah, so that's Article five, uh, five point zero-two, that's the use table that shows what's allowed there.
So they, we used to have a use table in each district, but it was getting a little too wordy, so we, we reference every, all, any use-related thing is referenced in Article five, yeah.
Got it, got it, got it.
And I think, hopefully we can freeze the top column per page, so it's easier to follow, because it can get a little confusing.
Yes, that would be nice, so that you could have it.
Yeah.
So you don't have to be like.
Play a puzzle.
The third or the fifth column, and then try to figure out what it is.
Exactly.
So if you had it like.
Put it on every.
Page, it would, you could.
Right.
Read the table better.
And also reference that in each of the art- articles, right?
Yeah, yeah, correct. And I, I think there's a line in there anyway, but we'll have to update it with the, with the link, so it's.
Okay. Nope.
Once this is approved, any pending applications or new applications, at what point, is it only from the date it's approved forward? If you submit an application, it's.
Yeah, after the thirty-day effective period, yeah.
Yeah, so I was gonna ask, what's the next process? We vote tonight on it, or hopefully, hopefully vote tonight on it. It goes then to the trustees?
Yes.
To approve and or deny?
Yeah, I, I imagine it'll take a ma- a handful of sessions, um, I think we haven't, Robin and I have talked about the, because we, once the recommendation's in place, we have to s- have the trustees schedule at their fall, next regular meeting, and from there it has to be within thirty days, um, we have not done this in-depth of a review with them as we have with you guys, so. Well, my idea is we schedule the first hearing late end of July, early August, um, and that'll be an introduction and just kind of an overview, and then, then from there we'll discuss the strategy on what they need as far as their review for the decision.
Okay, and then they vote on it, and then that presumably is when it will be officially adopted?
Yes.
Is there a public comment period on this?
Yeah, so all the trustee meetings will be public hearings, mm-hmm. Yep.
But they can revise what they want to revise.
I mean, I, I, I hope we can continue to convince the trustees that you guys have, you know, we reviewed this every single page. I, we've also done this, I, well, here's my soap opera, but, you know, I've been trying to do this since twenty nineteen, so there's been a lot of work in, in this place.
Well, I mean, ju- just with respect to the work Robin has done.
Yes, and Rob.
And, and because Robin's heard all this, taken all the comments, worked on a lot of things themselves, I mean, it'd be, it'd be my thing that nothing should change unless he approves it.
No, and it.
I know it doesn't, but, 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 but you, you have the kind of work in this and details in this that no one else has, no one else even approaches what you have in this.
And definitely want to give kudos to Robin, because we, we, you know, typically consultant would be the one spending the time to edit this, but we decided to do this in-house because we are unique and townships don't have zoning rewrites like we do, so it was really hard to find, um, somebody on the outside to really dive into this text, and Robin has spent numerous days, hours in taking everybody's feedback, so I'm really happy with the product that is here now, so thank you.
You studied our project.
You're our hero.
And, and I trust that you, you all have been socializing with the, uh, trustees, the work that has been going on.
I, I, I mean, I know, the trustees are listening to our hearings, um, I have been forwarding them updates along the way.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I anticipate us having more conversations with them, I just, hopefully it can be a little more, uh, consolidated, because you guys have done the legwork on this, so.
Very good.
Very, very good. All right, um, is there any other over rewrite items to discuss before the commission?
It's only two hundred and eighteen pages.
As you said, any thoughts, comments?
Well, thank you so much for all of your review and effort, this has been a huge undertaking, um, for everybody, so I really, really appreciate the time that you guys have provided for us.
So right now we have one, two, three, four modifications listed, can we create, uh?
I added two more.
Do you add two more?
I have two additional.
Okay, I was gonna say, can we clarify what those are, um, and how does the commission feel about voting on this before we leave?
Yeah, yeah.
I would, I would highly encourage that, so what are the, so what are the additional modifications?
Uh, so the first is to, uh, add language to the mixed-use district, uh, to encourage or require uh, walkability and connectivity between uses. And then the second would be to, for township staff to work with legal counsel to investigate adding exemptions for signage for, uh, signage that is installed by the state or federal governments, uh, such as historical markers or similar signage.
Did we also want to amend the definition of a mixed-use building? Is that, was that what you said on number five?
That's not quite what I said, but we can also.
I would, yeah, we could add that is to, um, further define definition of a mixed-use.
Mixed-use building.
Building, yeah.
And then add language to mixed-use district to encourage.
Walkability between the two use.
Yeah, or connectivity, walkability.
Yeah.
All right, um, so can I have a motion?
Do we need to read it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, you want me to?
I can do it.
Did you add the addition?
All right, so, and when we get to those additional pieces, I'll have to read your script.
I don't know if you can read my script, but okay.
Well, we'll ask for it to be added in some way. Motion by Les Pierce to recommend the board, recommend to the Board of Township Trustees, the Board, the approval of modifications of zoning application, uh, number Z O N two-four oh-five, amending the Orange Township zoning resolution upon finding that it is in the interest of the public convenience, comfort, prosperity, or general welfare, or sufficiently in accordance with the comprehensive plan, including additional modifications as listed below. Number one is that all modifications listed in the document title Z O N dash two-four dash zero-five dash six-point-one-seven-point-two-five draft redline. Number two, zoning staff shall correct any formatting, textual, and typographical errors in the document. Number three, the time limits for temporary banner signs in Table twenty-two point oh-nine A shall be limited to two times per calendar year. Number four, the definition for data center shall be updated to include cryptocurrency and data mining. Number five, to add language to mixed-use.
Districts.
Buildings, districts, buildings, to add lang- um, to encourage connectivity and walkability.
Can further define the definition of a mixed-use building?
And further define the definition of a mixed-use building. And number six is to, for the township to work with legal counsel to revise or review language, um, requiring.
No, two.
Yeah, language, requiring signage, to review signage, uh, that is issued by the federal and state in various buildings, uh, i.e. such as historic, uh.
Markers.
Markers.
To exempt such signage.
To exempt such signage.
Got it.
Did you get that? Or you could just borrow my piece of. All right, can I have a vote?
Mr. McDulte.
Yes.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Ms. Chabellis.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Yes.
Mr. Avada Nolak.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do we have any other business before the commission?
We do.
All right, um, as a refresher, when is our next commission meeting?
Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, uh, the twenty-fourth. I was hoping to have updated materials from the applicant to give to you tonight, they have not submitted anything to. from the applicant to give to you tonight, they have not submitted anything to me as of.
Oh, wow.
That is why I asked that question, uh, when is their deadline?
I told them by the end of business today.
Okay, so, uh, please inform us or keep us informed as to the status of our next meeting?
I, thank you, I think, uh, we will at least, most likely, unless I hear otherwise, we will convene to at least continue it to another date, or, you know, maybe if they get in to me early next morning, we'll be able to work something out, but.
Alright.
And, uh, Robin, one other question, once you complete your redline and make the modifications, so for the old issue as a new.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, so if there's no more business, adjourned.